Well, I guess we'd better get started.
Ah, yes.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, shall we get somebody on the phone?
Yeah, see if you can get written here somebody on the phone so you have a quorum. Another thing, I mean, he's got to wait for next month, too. But if we get somebody, we can just get him on the site.
Do you want to try Kay first, or?
Well. No, approved. We can't even do that, can we?
Yeah, it really...
We can't do anything.
And you can't make any decisions.
Unless we have one of them on the phone.
This is Crystal Seacoal.
That's the grant administrator, you know, does, helps with some of those. But I, every, so like Firth and Aberdeen, she had mispublished something. And so my guess is she probably mispublished for you guys, too, had wrong dates. So something about some grant programs. I don't know what it's about, but I know they've had the same problems, so. My guess is that's getting postponed till next month.
You didn't know anything about that last one? Nope, nothing.
Okay. Oh, I do, I do. She was talking to me about it. This is, um... This is to sign the contract that that's him do our testing for our water, or for our syropols. This is the contract that... With us, please?
I thought we already approved it.
Yeah, we did that a year ago.
A year ago?
Okay, I, I, I don't know. She said it was something to do with the contract to do the, um...
Leak test?
To do the leak test.
He hasn't done that yet?
It's, it's really close. Come on.
Really close.
He's got to take it to the engineering place. And our DEQ, and he's been stolen, he had the, his equipment failed, and we got new equipment. Turned it back in. We've been 30 days. I've been watching it.
Yes, Kay's coming to meeting tonight.
The pond has went down...
All right, thank you very much.
Two and three quarters inches.
Okay, thank you.
And his pond has went down three and almost eight there each. So...
Every year, not anything.
There's no reach.
So what's that mean?
There's no reach.
Oh.
But he's got to turn it into DEQ. And so before we remove everything off of there, he's got to turn it into DEQ. So this is probably a resolution that DEQ needs, to be my guess. That's probably a resolution that DEQ needs.
Kay's coming. Kay's coming.
So where are we at on the new pump?
On the new what?
Pump.
Pump, it's still hasn't been hooked up, electrically.
Can't you get somebody else to hook it up?
Um, I have, he's ordered up stuff over there, um, something there on the wall. He just hasn't hooked it up.
I don't care what he's got, I, you know, this is DS.
Uh, lived a long time. He was supposed to be here any day, we speak, I checked anything, and he showed up. Time to start the line up this fall.
Did you talk to him down, uh, about chip ceiling the road?
I haven't yet. I was gonna go, I was gonna find out how much money we had tonight, and then I was gonna drive down there tomorrow morning and have a talk with him about it. Is it, they want to know square footage, and so I took a measurement of the road today to get square footage on the road coming up through the middle of town, and...
How wide's the road?
Huh? Fourteen feet. Here comes Kay.
Yeah.
Late, but good evening.
What?
Late, but good evening.
Better late than never, man.
Yep.
Okay, minutes in September meeting to be approved.
I'll go. Never even looked at, but I'll approve.
Kay made a motion.
All favor.
Go ahead, I'm, I'm just taking short time.
Deals to be approved and paid for October.
One second.
All approved.
I like to shake my head if I have nothing else.
Huh?
I can shake my head if I have nothing else.
Then I've got to be watching.
Okay, the next one is approved Nelson variance recent, reasoned statement.
And he's got that.
Yeah, so that's, I just passed out a letter. Any planning and zoning decision, you're supposed to have a reasoned statement. You know, basically a finding of why you did what you did, it has to be writing. So just so you have it for your file, in case it ever gets questioned. Or if you have a variance down the road and that, you know, things are, you know, being treated differently. You know, you want that document in your file as to why you did what you did. So anyway, so there's a, um, I think, well, you guys want to...
Yeah, this is just the statement that Garrett gave, is that said why we did it.
You're supposed to write that?
Well, I wrote it.
Yeah. She was saying that she thought that that was for him to be doing some of these credits for us. It was to, I mean, to...
So you're gonna write that?
I did.
No.
Oh, you did, that's what's happening.
So we just have to approve that, right?
Yep, you just have to make a motion to approve the findings on the Nelson variance.
I motion to approve.
I don't know where I put mine. Thank you, Mike.
What, this, or?
This, yes. Yeah. She's trying to hang it on.
I'll second that.
I guess. All favor.
Any favor? Well, that's all, I'm, I'm going to go. Maybe do this, then I'll be ready.
I don't know. You said it's Crystal, was she supposed to hear that?
I, I don't know why she was on the agenda. I just know that she was also on the agenda for Firth and like Aberdeen, and couldn't do it this month because they had some publication problems.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just assuming it's the same problem.
So it's moved to next month.
My guess is it's just gonna get moved to next month.
Unless she shows up.
Unless she shows up.
Okay, I thought you showed up late. I'm laughing, you still...
Yeah. And so, like I said, she just, they had the same problem with Firth last night. It was some publication problem. I had plenty of work, she's there for her.
Okay.
I think you can skip over that one.
So do we, do we find out when six months?
Who, uh...
We know what adopt authorization?
We're about ready to find out.
They were 20, they were 28 days, they just...
Yeah, I get seen here, I think that's on the first one. A little later. I get seen this one.
Okay, I think we're ready for you.
Okay.
Perfect job.
Come, like, Gary, you can kind of look at these, you know, we go over, so...
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Husk Crowler.
Husk Crowler? Nice to meet you, Husk.
You did.
I think I've met you before, but I've been around for a while.
So you could be one of these, I've looked at that, and you guys can look at this end. And then we'll, we'll just go in there. But, good news is, I talked to DEQ this evening, this afternoon, and they said, yeah, it looks like their data's okay, and we can use the data and demonstrate that it doesn't, that it doesn't leak more than the .25.
So they approve it?
They don't officially approve it till I write the, write all the results up on a report and send it to them. But the lady, the lady who, who looks at all of these across the whole state, her name is Tressa Nicholas, and she looks at every single seepage rate test in the whole state and has it for several years. So she's looked at 1,500 of these things, or something like that. So I always call her. You do the political thing, and you talk to her, and you show her the data, and you talk about it, and you ask for her advice, and you ask her, you know, you do that deal. So she's invested in what you're doing. And what she did is, today, she said, "I don't see any reason to throw out this data." That make sense? I mean, so, so in other words, we can pull the, we can pull the equipment, we can go ahead and send it back, you know, and, and we can write up the report, and, uh, it'll make its way to her. And now that she's already looked at the data, she'll probably, I mean, it's, she'll end up approving the, the report. So, good news. That's a long answer for good news again, it will get approved later. But, um, want to make sure you understand that process first, you know. And so, this one, oops, this one was just the brown line. That's the, that's the lagoon we measured. That's in the cell one, that's measured over the, whatever, since the 26th through the 12th of October. So we got about two weeks there, a little over two weeks, you know, of data. And you see that the evaporation goes down each one there. The line's all fuzzy because that, it actually makes, takes a measure in every minute. And so you get, you capture a lot of wave action type stuff, because it does that. This one with the blue line, the blue line's actually the, the daily temperature. It's the water temperature in the, of the evaporation pan. The brown line is the, um, level. That particular sensor, um, the reason that, the reason it looks like a sinusoidal type pattern is that particular sensor is not calibrated for, to eliminate the atmospheric pressure. So we're getting atmospheric pressure instead of gauge pressure. Gauge pressure would be more, I mean, we'd get all the little waves and everything every day. But when you're measuring atmospheric, the atmospheric pressure does this on a daily basis, right? Goes up and down a little bit based on the temperature and things this night, morning. But it's not an issue, cheap, I mean, they have that, that's just happens to be how that gauge works. So the little red dots with the numbers by them, we, we do it every 24 hours, and that's, that's the number we actually use in the, in the calculations. And so, we're doing, I've done it at 8:00 at night. 8:00 at night, because usually the wind kind of dies down at 8:00, so you get a little better, a little finer reading. And then the atmospheric pressure is about the same at 8:00 every night, as you can see where the red dots are on that particular graph. Compared with each red dot, you know, it's, it's about at the same place in that diurnal pattern. Then, what we do is we take all those numbers that are associated with those red dots, and we, uh, we assign them to, uh, this is a spreadsheet they use, and I know that it's little, but there's a, a graph here in the middle, there's a red line. That red line is the .25 inches per day. And the, the green line that goes up and down, that's, that's our evaporation each day. So they're all below the .25. And you see there's little error bars associated with it, that's the error in the instrument. And so all the error bars are below .25 as well. The graphs on the bottom, that has to do with, um, how well the data is tracking from each, um... It compares the evaporation, one of the bottom left compares the evaporation in the pan, the evaporation lagoon, and see if, if they, they have a similar pattern each day, right? And we have kind of an odd, we have a kind of an odd reading about halfway through. You see where the two graphs come together. They're going the opposite direction, which says something goofy happened that day, but we're well below the .25. So regardless of what goofy happened, and you look at the, all the samples around it the day before, the day after, okay, whatever happened that day, did a, who knows? I mean, did a, did a, a bird drink some of the water out of the pan? Did a, you know, did, I don't know. Did a goose step on the, the platform that it was coming?
We did have that one day of rain.
Yeah. The rain, the rain day was, was kind of before that day.
There was that first day of rain that was monstrous.
What we did is we, we had it set up, then we took some readings, and we, we down uploaded the data from one of the pressure sensors in the evaporation pan, and it accidentally got turned off. So there were three days where we didn't measure any, that flat spot, it was just zero, because it wasn't, it wasn't recording the data. So that's why it kept going for longer. And this is the data on the right-hand side that we used. And I went over that with DEQ, they're aware, but I told her what happened and all that kind of stuff, so. And then the one on the right hand, so bottom right hand, what that does is says, it's kind of a, a projection. What it tries to say is the, the two lines that are, I'm hesitant to use the word parallel, have the same shape. Our green line, ideally, each dot would be in between there. That's saying, hey, based on last, on yesterday's reading, we expect tomorrow's or today's reading to be between these two lines. Seldom are they exactly between it, and partly is because if you have, if your readings are really small, then the space between those two lines of the same shape is small. So it's saying, or, so, um, if you, if you're, if the variation in the daily reading is, well, one day was .1 inches and the next day was .8 inches, and it bounced around a bunch like that, those two lines that are the same shape would be way, they'd be pretty far apart. So it'd say, hey, there was a variation of an inch in your reading, in your readings the last two days. So we expect tomorrow's reading to have that much variation, too. When you're reading, when your differences are like an eighth, I mean, a sixteenth or a thirty second of an inch, those two lines are really close together. And so, it, when they're like that, um, then it's easy for the next day's reading to be outside of that band. And then you plug it into this other software, the statistical software, you do it, it, it just is the easiest way to do it, because there's a, an N-Loop does a, one, anyway, there's a statistician, a one-way analysis of variance, that determines what, how many readings you would need to be 95% confident that the readings you're taking are actually what they, what you would expect. And, and that software says, we really only need three readings, three days, in order to be 95% confident that the value that's our average is really the average. But DEQ never accepts that number, they want to do about twice that many anyway, which is why we have six readings, or seven readings in here. And I always ask them, what's the point of putting it in the, the one-way analysis, running that analysis, if that's not acceptable? Well, something might happen on the fourth day. Well, statistically, it says that it's valid, you know? Anyway, bottom line, we'll get the report written up. And, and, you know, if this, if this would come back, hey, we have sea, sea beach, okay, then we have to decide are we gonna do another test, are we gonna do a project, and line the lagoons, that, that, that. But what this says is we don't have to line lagoons. And that is fantastic news, because that's a few hundred thousand dollars to line those lagoons. So, and we're, and we're done with this for 10 years. Don't have to, don't have to deceive.
Thank you, Mr. ...
So, any questions on it? Then, I don't know if Tressa printed out, mayor, I may have to catch up to you. The grant application for the, you know, to do the, do the amendment to the facilities planning study for wastewater treatment alternatives.
Who the what?
Wastewater treatment alternatives. Remember when I first started here? I mean, my first agreement with you was to write a second opinion on the treatment alternatives that were in the facilities planning study you did in 2017? Because you go back and say that was, because that was when Firth was finishing their plant, and we were trying to figure out whether, you know, you would like them not to participate, but everybody was saying that your lagoon's late, and there was always problems with them, and you had to do something about it. So we said, well, let's look at our alternatives for wastewater treatment. But we don't want to have to write a whole new facilities planning study, and whatever. So we just said, let's just do a second opinion. So I, well, that's the agreement we signed first, the city signed first with me. But then the seepage rate stuff came up, and I said, well, let's not look at the, it doesn't make any sense to look at alternatives for treatment. And when we said alternatives for treatment, do we build, should we build another pond so that we have more capacity? Should we, um, build like a lift station or something so we can control the discharge to the city of Firth? Of course, we have to look at the going to the city of Firth, whatever. Should we build our own plant? Do we have to do that? There were several things, should we do land application, take our, her lagoons from a, from a total containment into a land application system? Anyway, there was all those things, but I said, until we know if we have to line those lagoons or do something with the lagoons because of the seepage rate, there's no use to do any evaluation. So that's why we did the seepage rate test first. Then the city, then even called the mayor, said, hey, there's all this money out there, the, um, CARES Act money, and the, that came through the COVID thing, said, hey, should we find this? So what I said is, we have that, we have that agreement to write a, you know, that second opinion. Let's just talk to DEQ, and let's do a amendment to the facilities planning study so that we can get their money to pay for half of that study. So that's what we did, we wrote that grant, and they gave, you were awarded, uh, $12,000, I think. If I remember, it's a $24,000 study, so it's $12,000 they're gonna give you to pay for that. We don't have to do the whole thing, all we have to do is do an amendment to it, those same alternatives we were gonna look at before. And so I completed the application, we, so we wrote the letter of interest in January. You were put on the list in May, they gave you a notification, probably a letter that came to the city, maybe you, mayor, in June, said, yep, you're ranked such and such on this list, you, and you're eligible for the funding. Then they sent you a letter offering, said, here's the offer for the grant. Tell us whether you're gonna accept it or not. So we wrote them a letter and said, yeah, we're going to accept the grant. I think I talked to you on the phone, mayor, and then they said, well, now, and now you have to submit an applicant, actual formal application for that. So I completed the application, and I emailed it to Tressa, so that she, you know, so that you could sign that, mayor. And we have to submit that back to DEQ. I don't know if she printed it out or not. If she didn't, then I probably need to catch up with you tomorrow or first part of next week, and see if we can, see if we can get that signed and submitted, assuming that you still want to apply. If you don't, you don't have to. I mean, nobody's telling you have to apply. We did send them the letter after, I think I talked to you on the, on the phone, said, we did send, we did submit the letter, or we, we did submit them a letter saying that we were intending on applying.
I think that... I think that $24,000 for that. Whatever you call it, just a waste of money.
Kay, I said you don't have to accept it.
You don't want to study to see what you could do to improve?
Why should we? We know what we want to do, we're gonna do.
Can we move ahead with what we want to do, or?
No. What do you want to do?
Make a new pond.
Then you have to write the study. DEQ will not let you make a major improvement to your system unless you do the facilities planning study.
And if you get the graph from the study?
Then you can, then you can apply for money.
You're gonna pay $12,000, too. Yes.
Yeah, you do, because it's 50% grant.
$24,000, we gotta pay half of it.
But in order to, in order to borrow money to build another pond, you have the money to build a pond on your own, you don't have to do it. But you still have to write the facilities planning study, because DEQ says, we, we want to know what you're doing, so write us a study so we can get, basically approve what you're doing, the changes to your system. Particularly if you want to borrow their money, then you have to have, you have to write the study, otherwise they won't loan you any money. And the study is, and, and what we did is we said, we're not gonna write the whole facilities planning study. You just did one of those, you spent a bunch of money on that in 2017. So let's only write an amendment to it, let's take the scope and cut it down substantially, so that we, and I got DEQ to agree to that. Said, this, this, that study they did, it was done in 2017, they did a collection system project span, I don't know, wanted to spend $200 million on collection. Said, there, I spent a bunch of money on that. We don't want to have to rewrite all of that stuff and study the collection system. They already made it, I mean, that's a recent project. All they're interested in is treatment, because they, you know, and we have to, DEQ makes us say the no action alternative. What if we don't do anything? What if we go to Firth? What does that involve? What if we put another pond in for our own? If we do, when do we need to put it in? Do we need to put it in in two years? Or wait for 12 years before we put it in? I mean, what's our, what's our capacity compared with what's our flow? And how many connections should we be looking at? When should we time that? Do we do it now, or do we do it later? And then the other one is, you know, we looked, we talked about early on, the first time I came here with Justin, the first couple times, was more of a controlled flow to the city of Firth, which I think is kind of a moot point now. Because of the time, you were paying additional fees to Firth, because there were, um, there were times when you exceeded the amount that they, that was in the agreement. You have the volume of water you sent them per month was more than the agreement. Because of, just in the main way that the ponds filled and the water. But when you did your collection system project, my big assumption is, is that the infiltration went way down. So you don't get as much flow into those lagoons as you used to. I mean, that's why you did the collection project, is to cut down the infiltration. So, once that, once that was done, I don't, I mean, how many times have you discharged to Firth since that was done?
Nothing.
They have nothing, right? And so, well, and so what we're really looking at is said, so with the flow that's going in it now, we know it's, we know your lagoons are sized to handle, you know, the number of connections you currently have. Well, how many, how many will they handle so that we know when we should be planning the third lagoon? We need to convince, we need to tell DEQ that's our best alternative, that's what you want to do. And we gotta justify that, here's, here's, here's three or four alternatives, here's the one to add another lagoon. The lagoon will be this size, it'll add this much capacity to our system, and therefore we'll have a capacity for 200 connections instead of what, what did you tell me? Yeah, you have like 130 some connections now. Somewhere in that ballpark.
I don't know, see, they sell drone that big.
Yeah. And it probably, may, may or may not, but, you know, that's, that's why it has to be done if you want to add that third lagoon. If you don't want to add it right now, you know, say, well, we're not gonna study, we'll, we'll study it down the road. If you do it, you, you don't do the amendment now, when it comes time, whether it's two years or 20 years from now, then you'll have to do the full facilities planning study again.
Well, they don't want to do that, do they? So I guess we'll have to do it now, then, right?
That's our best thought, shouldn't we, not you?
I think it's an easy step right now. How long is the facility, how long will it normally be valid for?
Typically, they're valid for five years, you can argue it for, you know...
So, right.
Yeah. Usually, depends on who's at DEQ, and how reasonable the person in charges at the time, you know? And that's what we did on this one, is technically, I think you were 2016. Yeah. The argument I made was it's been close to five years since you, since it was completed, or since you started it, and whatever, and so, we don't want to have to write all of the boilerplate fluff stuff up front in one of those things, you know, because they, they make you write it according to their outline. You gotta, I mean, you gotta write, address every single section, whatever you want, it's a, there's no point in just writing all this stuff again. The city hasn't, there isn't, there probably isn't that many more connections in the last five years. I don't know, ten, half a dozen? New homes in the last five years? Anyway, whatever it is, said, I made the argument to them, said, if we're, if we, we're gonna do something with treatment, build a lagoon, whatever, line applications, said, we only want to study that portion of it. We don't want to do any of the rest of the facilities planning study. And that's how I wrote the grant application to them. And that's what I also say in this letter that says, if we accept it, that if we accept the grant and send this application in, I've also written that in that letter, saying, we're just looking, it's just an amendment, and all we're doing is looking at treatment alternatives.
Okay, so do we need to pass that tonight?
Make a motion to approve the facilities study? Amendment to the facility study? You need a, you have a formal resolution you need, or just a motion?
So, uh, there's a, actually, they have, they, they sent out that...
I assume they have a quorum?
Yeah, they sent out a resolution. And I think I, I can pull it up on my...
Well, so we can do a motion to approve the resolution for the amendment to the facility study.
And the resolution says, basically just says that the mayor, what their resolution says that the mayor can sign all the documents, is what it says.
And that way you have it all approved tonight?
Well, it's not.
I said, do it, so do the motion to approve the resolution for the amendment to the facility study. That way, then when Tressa can get it printed off, you can sign it. That way, then when Tressa can get it printed off, you can sign it. I mean, but then we're not waiting a month to the next day.
I'm going to approve the amendment, the resolution study.
All favor. Now, do we have to add something else? That's it.
That's it. And then, so like us can email the, the formal resolution to Tressa that you had signed, because I know that's been passed. Because I know they have their standard form, I mean, that's what we use on everything.
They've probably seen this a dozen times.
Maybe this is it here, Garrett.
Here it is on this.
Yep. Yep. That's probably the last piece of it. Yeah. It's proven signed.
Yeah.
Well, do you need this?
Yeah. I don't know. I'll scan it, send a copy back, and send a copy to DEQ.
Does she need to sign this?
Does it replace her for to be notarized?
Yeah.
Probably just to test it by the city.
Test it. Yeah, just to test it, yeah.
Okay. There was no number of yes votes. I'm crazy. Okay, I'll get her to finish this out and then.
I can run down and get it or whatever I need to do, or email, scan it, email it, whatever, like Sam, so that she can fill that out. It's a, it's a Word document that has, fill in blanks that, they've made it so you can't really change anything. Drop down boxes or I can cancel or save or cancel or board or whatever that you need to be using.
It's somewhere.
I can work, yeah. But your motion, I can, I can, I can get hold of Tressa, and I can work with her and make sure she gets the Word document filled out, right, and sent back.
Okay. So is this from you too?
Yeah.
And what, what is that?
That one's for the, every, every one of these seepage rate tests, there's kind of three steps to it. We have to send them a test plan, then we do the test, then we have to do a test report, the results form or not. So there's three pieces to it. And right now on this retest, that's for the first step, which is to send them that test plan. They make it, they make you write it, but then it says, this is what we're gonna do, this equipment we're gonna use, this is how we're gonna do it. We're gonna put chicken wire over the lagoon. We're gonna, you know, put a fence around the platforms so the geese can't land, sit on it. We're gonna put an inflatable plug in the pipe. They make you tell you every little step in, mind in detail, which is, I guess it's okay, but it's, it's way more work than it needs to be.
So I guess that's everything.
Yeah. I guess that's everything I had anywhere.
You want to adjourn?
I won't, I won't.